Item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is the minutes, claim docket, and consent items as listed.
I'd like to, if I could, on the consent items, Mike Wasmer is a current boys' golf coach, has been for two years, and we have lost our golf coach, and he has agreed to be the girls' golf coach as well. Obviously, they're at separate ends of the year, spring and fall, so he's agreed to do that, and I would like to add that to the consent agenda and have him listed in there as well.
Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of Mike Wasmer hired as the girls' golf coach.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Oakley and Mr. Schmidt are going to be busy tonight, as Mr. Stock and Mrs. Will are on vacation. So we have a motion by Mr. Schmidt and secondly, by Mr. Oakley, to approve the consent agenda as listed. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We have no patrons concerned. And then, new business. Mr. Workmuster.
Probably got to pace during this, because that's what I do usually when I teach. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Russ Workmuster. I'm a sergeant with the Indiana State Police. I don't normally look like this. I got tangled up with a youngster at the academy and hurt myself, so I'm actually not working right now, but I've got some things together where I could come and give this presentation, and I want to take the time with you to talk a little bit. Brad Miller, who some of you know, I was going to have him up here tonight as well, and we actually had a conversation. I originally had a plan to give a PowerPoint presentation, but I think, I've been informed that this is put on YouTube. I think there's some things I need to keep close to my chest, and keep those somewhat out of the public eye, but I think I can explain what my goal and what my intentions are with giving you the information that I'm going to give tonight. Hopefully, at some level, by the end of this, you guys will come to an agreement, and I hope in this that I can give a presentation to every person that works at each school, whether it's the administration, the educators themselves, the custodians, anybody that works in each and every school. I would like to give this training. Let me back up. A little bit about me, I've been a trooper for 21 years. I started up in the northwest corridor of the state of Indiana, up in Lowell District. I worked there for two and a half years in that situation up there, and if I, I can tell you, it was an eventful area that has Gary, Hammond, Mariville, Sherville. It's quite an active area. I moved down to Evansville area when I got assigned to the casino. I got a transfer, which got me out of the area up there, which is what I wanted, to move down here. Worked on the casino for a year and a half as a gaming agent, got off into Evansville District, worked Gibson County, Posey County. I worked criminal interdiction. I got promoted to detective several years ago. I worked organized crime, which was quite interesting. Shortly after that, I got promoted to sergeant, and what that is, I'm a supervisor. I actually supervise Posey County. And with that, my current duties, among supervising the five troopers that are assigned to Posey County, I also teach our department's defensive tactics program, which is basically the fighting program. I teach at the district level, and I also teach at the academy, which is where I had my little accident, and as well as I teach other agencies from time to time. I also am the team leader of the hostage crisis negotiator team, which means I work right with the SWAT team, basically, on the lower third of the state, working to resolve hostile and serious situations. The reason I'm here is to talk about active shooters. I think you've all seen the news lately, and you can understand how serious of a situation this is. I can tell you, it's the biggest thing that I have seen come to rise in my short 21 years as a police officer. It's absolutely changed the way the police do business on things. An active shooter, if you don't know, is basically a systematic or a random situation where a person either has a plan or not a plan, and goes into a populated area with the sole intent to kill or injure people. When we say active shooter, that's just a phrase. It can be, we can, they can use knives, guns, bombs, improvised explosive devices, bombs. As a matter of fact, we've had several that have used knives. An example, not exactly in this country, but in China, they had a gentleman that killed 23 children with a knife and an adult outside a grade school. So the weapons, there are all different types of weapons that are used. Everything from a gun to a knife to a baseball bat to anything that can inflict harm on another human being. And the problem with these types of crimes, they have them in what they call gun-free zones. I'm not going to get into a political issue of the gun-free situation, but basically, it's where the cops aren't, and they know there's no guns, for people to be protected. And unfortunately, that's schools. 25% of the active shooters that occurred between year 2000 and 2013, almost 25% of them have occurred in educational venues, schools, Virginia Tech, colleges all over the United States. Some of them that have police forces, some of them that do not. I'm going to give you a little bit of the history on the active shooter. It's a relatively new term. It could have, it could have happened before. They've been recorded in 1974 as the earliest one, in Bardstown, Indiana, actually, all the way up until, what, last week. They could have been called something else, they could have been called a number of things, where it wouldn't necessarily have been able to research that, get that information, and qualify what those things are. But basically, from year 2000 to 2013, there were 160 active shooters in the United States, and that happened in 40 of the 50 states. So very few places is immune to this phenomenon. And out of that 160 active shooter situations, 486 people have died. That's affected 486 lives. When you look at that, how that spreads out between family, friends, coworkers, that's exponential how that goes out and how that affects people. There was, looks like 557 that were just injured that actually survived. So the impact on this country is staggering in terms that it comes to active shooter. What my job, one of my jobs is to provide whatever services I can to my community. My superintendent has made it a priority that the state police provide whatever services, education, manpower, teaching techniques to schools, businesses, whoever wants the education and the information in any way that we can, as much as we can, as much as they want the information. So this can be a talk tonight, and this can be over with and done, or if you choose to move forward. My goal in this is to get every person that works in this school system of this, in this industry of North Posey, this training, to get them what to look at, to get them to what to see, how to recognize it, what to do when something horrible happens. When I said 40 of the 50 states where it's happened, Posey County is not immune to this. It's happened in this school district, it happened in Mount Vernon School District back when I first got here. Donna Nashville tells a story where she was a hostage in North Posey High School, where no one was killed, but there were shots fired, and I think it was a chemistry lab, if I remember correctly. So we are not immune to this. Anywhere someone can have bad intentions, this certainly can happen. It's certainly a real situation. With the training that I'm wanting to provide, and again, I, we have a PowerPoint presentation that we use, that we give, that we provide to the educator, educators, educators and the administrators. I know that I want to give you that today because of how it's going, could be reproduced or seen. There are some scary things that are on there. I actually gave the presentation to the junior high, and Mr. Kavanaugh, it was very well received. I got a lot of good feedback from the teachers that were there. Time restraints, it was towards the close of the year, wasn't really able to get it out to the rest of the schools, so I thought probably the best course of action is to come here, present it to Dr. Camp and the rest of the board, and let them make an educated decision on how you want me to proceed, whether I can get your support into giving this to all, everybody, and I can appreciate with the amount of time that that's going to take and your resources, that that's going to be the situation. And please make this a dialogue, if you have comments, please.
Can you, do you have the ability to make a copy of that, or can you send that to me through the web so I can view it?
I can.
And share it with the board? I have an outlet where I can share things with the board.
Sure, absolutely.
And it's between us and the board.
I would, I'd ask that it stay within the confines of the board, because there is situational things, how we would react to such active shooters, and we have some mock things in there. I don't want to give anybody any ideas.
Is that the, and in that training, you would show this to the people you were training, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, alright, okay.
Basically, I'd go to all the schools, and I know that you have teaching days where you, and again, I know that would require time and, you know, for the teachers to be doing other things, other education that they would need, but I can, I can knock it down to about 45 minutes to an hour, but it's hard to chop it down any more than that so they understand the entire effects of what's happening. And not only do I want to show them this, I want to have some continuing education, which again, is a, I know, I appreciate, it's a tremendous amount of time that the school is going to have to dedicate. I pass this by Vince once, and the date was not exactly correct, there's some, sort of some conflict on it, but do you know when the last time someone died in a fire in a school system?
It's been a while.
1958. And what we thought is it was 1947, but it's 1958. When you think about that, way back when, some educators and some administrators and legislators went, hey, we need to get our act together, there's got to be a better way. And they put some rules into effect, they passed some legislation, so what, is it every month or every other month do you guys have a fire drill?
Yeah, we have a fire drill every month, and twice a year, or twice a semester, we have to do severe weather drills, so.
This is my goal, in this, in this whole program that I'm trying to implement to get moving, is I want the teacher, most importantly, the teachers, and everybody else in that school, to be as comfortable with an active shooter drill as they are to fire drill. Fellas, I can remember back when I was a kid, when it was a fire drill, it was like, woo-hoo, we'd get a few minutes out of class, do whatever, drive the teacher crazy outside. I remember getting in all kinds of trouble when I was doing things I shouldn't have been doing, but it's because we weren't scared. We weren't, we were familiar, we knew exactly what to do, we got that thing done, and then time got the best of us, and I ended up getting in trouble. Mrs. Watson chewed margarine, I can't tell you how many times, but I knew what to do. I knew if there was a fire and the alarm went off, line up, get my stuff, and out the door I went. That is my goal with this active shooter training. Now, I am not at all looking to make the educators here, police officers, whether they're carrying weapons, nothing like that is what my intention is. I simply want to provide some education to them and some training, and then, down the road, some stimuli to see how they react, because has anybody been here, ever been truly scared to death? I mean truly, not what they say, man, that scared me to death, I mean truly scared to death. Has anybody here? I have. And I can tell you, one reason that I got through those situations is because of training. The phenomenon of fight, flight, or freeze is very real. When you get so scared that your brain stops working, other than your essential processes, your heart beating, your lungs taking in oxygen, and your blood getting pumped to your major muscles so you can do whatever, that's about it. That's all that's going to work if you're that scared. But with training, you can overcome that. And again, I'm not trying to make them ninjas, I'm not trying to make them Navy SEALs, I'm trying to get them where they go, ho, this is happening, I know what to do, I've done this before, and take action. Now, I know that you guys have a policy now. It's basically a hide and place policy, where you have the drill of an active shooter, lock the doors, turn off the lights, and do, and do your procedure, and I don't want to say too much. There's nothing wrong with that procedure. The state police has a slightly different take on it, where theirs is run, hide, and fight. I'm not saying that the one that you have is any, is any better or any worse, I'm just saying that the fact that you have something is wonderful. You have a policy, you give them something to do, but if you don't give them the training and the stimuli for them to go, whoa, this is happening, you're kind of missing, you're kind of missing the ball in what I'm thinking.
So is this like a mock shooter drill that you guys do in the building, or is this...
I would say, if that is to happen, that would happen a long ways down the road. It is not my intention, we have done it, but it's not my intention scare the bits out of teachers, parents, because we know how fast this would get out there and scare the heck out of people. We did this at Farmersville School, and we got a very powerful but overwhelming response to it by some of the teachers. Some of them were scared to death. Are there any, we're on the finger, anybody here familiar with guns, gun people? Okay, it's not, that's not abnormal for being, living in this area. How many people have shotguns in a house, in a building? Know what it sounds like?
Every shotgun in a house.
Or heard it, or heard it, it's completely different. Let me tell you for a quick example, because I don't want to, I don't want to take all your night. When we went to Farmersville, we used black powder blanks. Any muzzleloader hunters? Oh my goodness, black powder, oh, it's loud. It is so loud. It is different than the noise that modern smokeless powder makes, that is loaded in modern ammunition. It's a different kind of noise, they're both loud, but the other one is very booming, very loud. The horseshoe, basically, or the square, basically, of Farmersville, one side didn't know that it was happening on the other side, couldn't hear it. So the communication, the training is essential. Let's say for example, and this is just an example, if there was one at the high school or the junior high, and hopefully, they went through the front door, those secretaries are going to be the first line of defense, those are going to be the ones that are going to have to say, that guy don't belong here with that weapon, you know, obviously not let them in, get on the intercom, put your actions into place, call the police. Another scary thought, Brad Miller lives a couple miles from the high school, I as well live in town here, man, if I'm sitting on my car, ready to go, it's taking me two or three minutes to get there. Over 60% of the active shooters are done within five minutes. The ones that aren't, sometimes are less, sometimes are more. I think we all can remember Colorado Little, yeah, Columbine. It was a long drawn out horrible situation, but the cops were unorganized, and the training that we've received, and I can tell you that I've received active shooter training, we were ahead of the game, thank goodness. I don't know how we got ahead of the game, but I've been doing it for the last 15 years, active shooter training, every year, every single year, and I can tell you, it's gotten more dynamic and more dynamic, where I would never suggest this idea in the schools here. We had it in training in Vincent's where we used VU students, we used ammunition, of course, they had goggles, and they were all volunteers, these crazy kids, and the anarchy that we had, and I just had 75 students running at me, hard to pick out a bad guy, hard to pick out, you know, what to do and how panicked the situation was. It was incredible training.
Are there a lot of other corporations doing this type of training?
Absolutely. One that comes to mind specifically, I know that Castle, the Moore County Schools, they have some of the scenarios that you've actually just, that you questioned me about, where they've had police off, they lock down the school first, make it completely secure, where everyone is safe, but then they've had police officers come in and act as an intruder, and to see how the students, and most importantly, the educators, react. Guys, I'm telling you, the kids, there's nothing, there's no way you can expect, there's no way you can predict what they're going to do. They've never been put in any type of that situation, there's nothing, I don't, I don't know what they're going to do. But you know, they're going to need leadership, they're going to need a very strong personality, someone that has had that training to take control immediately and get things in line, whether it be they hide in place, they know the guys on the other side of the school, get outside in the cornfield, wait for the police to show up, whatever they do. I'm a fan of do anything rather than nothing.
Would there be a cost to the corporation associated with the training?
Other than the time of the teachers, you know, what, how, I don't know how they're compensated, I don't know anything about that. From us, no, there's, like, if we had ammunition, you know, blank, whatever, the manpower for the police, no, there's no, nothing. It's all on us. Whatever compensation you would have to give those teachers for their time there, and I don't know how you would work that. We can make this training happen 24 hours a day, whenever you want, whenever you want, barring Christmas Day and Easter, I'm sure we can, we will find times to make it happen that is best for the school corporation. We will bend over backwards for whatever you need.
If you got an hour, if you were allowed an hour at each building, you could do the, all of the training within an hour. Well, obviously, not the ongoing, but the initial.
I could give a presentation, and yes, and some question and answer things, absolutely.
Okay. And you don't need necessarily the building locked down to start off with?
For the PowerPoint, absolutely not. No, 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 no.
This is something you can build upon.
Absolutely, and with, without scaring the daylights out of people, this would be a snail's pace, but in order to get this moving, we're going to have to get things together and get some scheduling together. Yes, Mr. Camp, I can, each school, give me an hour, and probably by the end of the last one, I'll pare it down to the important stuff in 45 minutes. I've given this thing several times. I wish, I really wanted you guys to get this, but I think it's probably better to err on the side of caution on this, but I'd welcome you. Anybody, if, when, and if we get this worked out, I think it's essential that you guys do, come watch it, and ask questions, and interrupt if you have something. If I can't, if I don't know where the answer, I will find you an answer, and I'll get you, get it done quickly.
I think this is probably a hot button type of a deal that we probably ought to be aware of, what's, just to actually see whatever you're doing.
Sure.
But, I mean, I'm for it, I mean, I think.
Unfortunately, it's necessary.
Yeah, and I think, but, but I would want it to be worked through Kavanaugh, who's our, kind of our safety liaison, and let him.
Well, I mean, just, I mean, brainstorming things going through my mind, I mean, we've already planned our seven hourly dismissal, but we're always tweaking that and adjusting that, and if it's just one hour, if there's, if we got the seven hourly dismissals, I mean, you're looking at 14 hours of things that we are doing, and I'm sure we can figure out a way to squeeze an hour in at each school, in the first or second one, that puts it at the beginning of the year, so the ongoing training and the other things can happen throughout the year. I mean, you don't want to wait for the seventh one and do it in April.
I agree.
So I, I need to look at, get them back and, get them back, and they come back the third, the last week of July, everybody comes back, so.
And I think it's important to be able to do it in the school that they're in. It certainly doesn't do any good for, in my opinion, to fight for, only because I know Amber, I know she works at the grade school here, yes, it doesn't do her much good to go to the high school. She's not familiar with that structure necessarily, other, well, she probably is probably more than I am, but I want them to be where they work, okay? I want them to be where they're familiar, where they know what to do, they know the building, where they're most familiar, and they know how to react in their building. Guys, I'm not trying to make them train killers, I'm just trying to give them some education so they have a chance to save these kids. I'm not trying to sensationalize active shooters. It is a very real, it is a very real thing, unfortunately, in our society these days, and 25% of the time, it's at a school. The other 75% of the time is somewhere else, most of the time it's at a business, like a, like GE or Sabic or Berry Plastics. I've got a whole list of things to tell you as far as stats go, but I think we're all on the same page as far as, you know, the danger signs and this and that, that I can clearly pass on to your educational staff, which is ones that need to know, that the threat is real.
I think what we need to do is we need to, when the principals come back, I'll have it on our first meeting agenda, and we'll try to look at the seven days and get the training done in each building. I mean, obviously, we'll have to schedule that with you.
Sure, I can accommodate whatever situation you have, I'll make it work. Are they all the same day, they'll, they'll all be on the same day, won't they?
Yeah, and I was thinking about that, and I was trying to think, well, there's, there's some other days that we could do something, and it'll just take us to get on, get on the stick as soon as we get back to kind of plan it out, you know.
But the grade schools release early.
Early, and we could.
So we could do a grade school possibly, and then the high school or junior high.
Yeah, they all have, they all have meetings once a month, too, and they're not on the same day, so maybe, you know, we might be able to use a professional leave day, and we might be able to use their, their regular scheduled conference after school.
I could appreciate the scheduling nightmare that this is creating, but anything that I can do to help, I can, anytime.
We might need to prioritize, I mean, all buildings are, all buildings are equally important.
Of course.
Is it more important to work in the grade schools and work up, or is it more important to work at the upper level?
Wish I had an answer. Traditionally.
Traditionally.
It seems like the more at the high school level, however, Sandy Hook was something that was, that came through the window.
Well, to me, I mean, just conceptually, I mean, South Terrace and North, both, and the high school and junior high are kind of in non-populated areas, you know, where there's.
That will take the most time to get someone there.
So maybe do those first, for North Elementary, I mean, you generally got somebody relatively, I mean, that's an active community.
And with that being said, it is a priority of the guys that I supervise and me. I try to park my car in front of this school at least once a week, same with the high school. I go in, I walk around, always very welcome. The high school's been wonderful, letting us train out there, nothing better than 15 state police cars in the back of the school. It keeps those kids wound tight, and that's okay. Okay, we're just up there training, we're up there beating each other up, but man, there's a bunch of police cars out there, and that's a good thing.
Always does something wrong. And one day, they didn't tell me y'all were there, and I went, what's all the police cars here for?
You know, the school's been very generous with the, you know, the use of the buildings, but again, that puts us in the schools, that gets us in there. Cory Mock, who's on the SWAT team, I know him and another trooper go up there, and they, they just flat out beat each other up in that wrestling room. You know, I help out, Trooper Miller, is assistant wrestling coach, I go up there and help coach myself. It's, it's good to have us in there, plus cops in the building, and that's a good thing. We're not there to mess with anybody, we're just there, if we're there, God forbid something happens, you've got cops there that can do something, that can help, help the situation, at least communicate and get things moving if something bad happens.
We have a program, too, that wants, you can go into a building and get a lunch, if you need the school lunch.
We've done that, we've done that.
And you can, that way we get people in the buildings at lunchtime.
We have done that, and it's not as bad as what people say. I, I, I know this is one of you two, but I've got a kid in high school, sometimes I'm out there for other reasons. The other, maybe taking something up to her's never been a problem, but I try to make it to the schools. I walk around, I don't try to disrupt the school in any fashion, but I don't think it's a bad thing for the kids to see the cops. It's a good thing to know that we're there to help. We're always the good guys, they don't ever have to fear us, we're the ones that help. So, and the schools have always been, always been wonderful, I'll make sure everybody's clear, they always welcomed us in, even with the food, they had to bribe us every now and again, but if you feed us, we'll show up.
Well, the only thing I would want, though, is if, I mean, I think it'd be good if you could get us the video so we could all.
Absolutely, I could get you the video.
But before we do anything that would involve a drill or something with the students, I think, I think we need to come, we need to talk about that a little bit, to make sure we, we understand that.
And I can get you some of the things that the other schools have done, but you're absolutely right, because the students are going to need to know, the parents are going to need to know, because it's going to go out like wildfire, with social media, the kids have got the phones, when they can text an entire paragraph and look at you while doing it, they're the buggers. It happened on interrogation, yes, it happened. It's going to be out like wildfire. We need to make sure that everybody knows it's just a drill, and in, in the end of this game, 20 years from now, they say, man, Workmuster's crazy, none of this stuff ever happened, we did all this training for nothing, and that's a win. That's a win, I'll take that, call me a crazy guy, but then everything's okay.
But maybe there's a way we could tiptoe into it by having like a volunteer on a weekend type of a deal, volunteer participation drill, and then...
I think, I don't know, what...
Whatever, whatever works, I'm just saying, I don't, I just think we just need to just...
We'll accommodate the school any way possible.
Y'all are going too far, I'm trying to get the, the training done in August and September.
And Mr. Camp, that's what it's going to take, we're going to have to take some baby steps, because it is going to take some time.
Sure.
But once we get everybody, where they get this training, and there's going to be some teachers that are going to look at me and go, holy moly, because some of the stuff is a bit scary, okay? But I'd rather them be a little scared or a little uneasy with some of the things that we have to talk about in a controlled setting on a PowerPoint. in a controlled setting on a PowerPoint presentation, than when there will things happen, they don't sit there and have absolute freeze up. Cause it will happen. Not all of them, I don't know how many, some people will freeze, others will run.
I'd run.
I don't know, but at least it is. I don't know. I know several of the teachers, many, most because of my children, one specifically. I don't know a single one that wouldn't put themselves in between a bad guy and a kid, not a single one. And if I find one that wouldn't, we'll have a conversation about it. We've got good people here, we have good educators here. And I think this is an opportunity to, to help educate and make this, the school a safer place. I can appreciate the, the mess this is gonna cause.
Well, let's, um, I, I mean, I've got Joe's number. I, 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 let me get what, they come back, the, the last week of July, I'll have that first thing on the agenda. Might even have you come up and talk, if you, if you're available, to come up and just be there when I talk with them, and then we, and then we just try to get some schedules for the training, try to figure out some dates.
And I don't wanna dedicate more of your time, especially in the summer, folks. I, if there's a time where I can give you this presentation without the other, I'd love to do it. I will, I will show you every, I'll show you my playbook. Just something, now's the, the right time for that. And it's important that you guys would see it. Because, I mean, you're, you're the ones that are, that are running the show, and I think some are gonna go, whoa, that's, that's something. But you also see, it's not the end of the world. We can handle it, we can work through it, we can get them, what has to be done. I really did not mean to take this much time.
It's alright.
But I appreciate your time, thank you for your attention. Um, I hope to hear from you soon. If you guys had any questions, I'll, I'll answer anything that I can.
No, I appreciate you coming up. Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
I'll just sit by and see if that's right.
Well, it looks like I'm up. The next item on the agenda is talked about Dr. Camp's contract. And for the, uh, the board, it is appropriate to discuss this agenda item this evening, because notice was properly ran, you know, the Posey County News, ten days prior to this meeting back on, uh, June the twenty-eighth. So again, notice was properly sent out. And, um, with that being said, this, uh, agenda item is only to solicit public input. And this public input could be used to, um, make your decision on Dr. Camp's contract at the next meeting. So you, you choose, if you so choose. So, I guess with that being said, I will open up this meeting for public comment on Dr. Camp's contract.
We also published that on our webpage as well.
Thank you.
It just, I mean, that, we did that as well.
Would anybody in the audience like to, uh?
Public comment?
Any public comment? Hearing no public comments, we'll close the, uh, the public hearing at this time. Again, there is going to be, uh, no decision on Dr. Camp's contract tonight. Again, it was just to solicit public input and to help you gentlemen in your decision-making process. So I guess with that being said, I'll turn things back over to Dr. Camp.
Well, we'll move forward. Uh, yeah, obviously, we're in several projects, uh, at this time. High school art and North Elementary, library, cafeteria, and special education classrooms. You know, we, when we, when we did the projects, I was concerned about any change orders and money and financing. And I just wanted to make sure things were, there were a lot of variables at the time, and I didn't wanna ask to approve alternates three and four. That were, we, we went ahead and accepted alternate one, which was, uh, the, the light, the finishing the lib, the old library. And then we had alternates two, three, and four. At this time, I really do not care about doing alternates two. Uh, but I would like to do alternates three and four, and since we have not had any change orders or any major costs that have come up, and all the other minor projects that we were doing that didn't have anything to do with this, have come in at budget, under budget, or right at budget. I feel like we do have the money to move forward, uh, uh, with this, uh, request of, of alternates three and four. And what we have done, we have, uh, some proposal requests that we've asked for. I do not have the price on, on changing from carpet to tile yet. That, that was after this. Uh, but, uh, we went through and we added a few things and we deleted a few things, uh, that, that made sense, you know, to, uh, we, we didn't need a, we didn't need a door, and they were gonna knock down a wall, and there was no door needed, so we didn't put it in. And then we had an office area where they were gonna put in a wood door and knock out a hole in the wall and put in a glass window, when we could just put in a glass door. So, we made some changes like that. Permanent fixtures in the classroom with the cross, uh, walls. I, I thought they, when we did that, I, I thought they were removable, but they were, they were permanent. And I don't wanna dissect a room permanently like that into quadrants. So, uh, we, if we need to do that, we'll buy partitions. I mean, they, the wall didn't go all the way to the ceiling, so it wasn't a sound thing. Uh, also, the permanent fixture in the new library at North Elementary, the stage area where the kids can sit and they can see the screen, you know, behind the teacher. I didn't really wanna put a permanent fixture out in the middle of the library. I mean, if, if we need that, we can buy some risers and they can sit on it. So we can, we can fix these things at a lesser cost and not make them permanent. But with that being said, and we also had one change order that we requested, uh, from fluorescent lighting to LED fixtures in the art room areas. Because with those additions, there's gonna be less sunlight, so we wanted better lighting. So, alternate three was originally twenty-eight thousand dollars, it still is. Alternate four is twenty-nine thousand dollars, it still is. We, uh, did a proposal request for, uh, LED lighting, which was eight thousand two hundred. And then we changed and deleted some things and got a fifteen hundred dollar credit. And with all that being said, I'm asking the board to move forward with these changes, uh, for the cost of sixty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. And, uh, we do have the money, we had the money when we originally did the project, though just being cautious. So, we have the money in CPF and then that, some of the bond money that's left over and rainy day to pay for these, these things. I'll probably move forward on these, uh, other changes that are from carpet tile like this to VCT tile. Uh, it could be, it could be a plus or minus a few hundred bucks, but I am gonna move forward with that just for, uh, to make the, the, the buildings flow smoother instead of that blue carpet going around. So, I'm gonna probably do that as well, but I didn't have any figures on that. If, if, if it comes back and it's more than a, you know, pocket change, then I'll, I'll bring that to you as well, but, uh, I'm planning on moving forward with it. So I'm asking the board to approve, uh, those changes and those, uh, alternate additions.
I'm sorry, Todd, just to clarify, so that estimate was sixty-three thousand seven hundred, is that what you said?
Yeah, the total for all the changes that we've made, added and deleted, and those, the alternates, everything totals to that. So what will happen is, is we have a contract with, uh, and the contract, the top line will change at each building, and it will reflect the alternates. The alternate at the high school, which is alternate four, it will change to the twenty-nine thousand, and that total cost of that project will go up. And then over here, the same thing, we'll, we'll do the same thing. So we're increasing the cost of each project.
Do you entertain a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve the addition of alternates three and four. I'll second it.
So, a motion by Mr. Oakley and seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve the request by Dr. Camp to include the, uh, alternates three and four to the current summer projects. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All post same sign, that motion carries.
Uh, I had told you in the past, uh, that we, we were beginning to have some trouble with our intercoms. The, the school that had the most trouble, uh, was, uh, the junior high, it actually is not working. And there are no parts to get it to work. The, the company that installed that fifteen, twenty years ago doesn't even exist. So there, there, there's nowhere to get the parts. And so, uh, it's band-aided together now. Uh, and I went to Vanguard, which is, uh, uh, controlling our systems now, to give us a quote to do, cause we did North Elementary last year, if you recall. Uh, and we had issues with that right after we did it, and they learned a lot of things, because it was the same type of system. Uh, so, you know, we hopefully wouldn't experience that with this. But South Terrace and the high school have the same issues. Their, their systems just aren't quite as bad yet, but, so we'll, we'll be needing to replace them all as we go. But, uh, the junior high, you don't wanna start school without an intercom system, so, or one that you can't depend on. So, it, it's very important that we do that. Uh, their, their proposal is twenty thousand dollar, twenty thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents to replace the entire system. Now, that system will allow us to, kinda like we did the fire alarms several years back. They're, they're housed in one location, but they operate the whole school. So, uh, we will have the capability at some point, if we wanted, uh, to make a control at each, each location, high school, junior high, and do the whole building or isolate it to where the high school does the high school or the, so. So I'm thinking, you know, in the future, if we needed to make any changes with that system. But the next system we'll need to replace probably will be South Terrace's. They'll be able to take some of the parts from the junior high and house them and hold them, and to help, cause that's the same system. But the high school is a different system, but we would, and then we, but it's still, you can still get parts for it. So eventually, we'll be replacing all four. But at this time, we'll do that one. I'm asking the board to approve that for twenty thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Do you entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the intercom system for Vanguard to install for twenty thousand five hundred seventy-eight and eighty-nine. I'll second it.
So, a motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Oakley to approve the proposal by Vanguard Alarm Services for a new intercom system at the junior high. Any other comments or questions? The only one I would have is that, I believe this is a safety issue as much as anything, and I don't think we can afford to have a safety issue. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All post same sign, that motion carries.
The next contract on the agenda is with Comptrol software. Comptrol, uh, is responsible for our personnel software, our budget, uh, software, and also our payroll software. At one point, North Posey didn't do its own payroll, and we sent it out and had it done, but, uh, they got, uh, Boys, which is Comptrol, probably about, uh, you know, I'm kinda guessing, but I'm thinking that, that they, they got Comptrol in probably around two thousand. It was a few years before I came to the central office, and I came to the central office in two thousand four. So I, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, because they had about three or four years of data in Comptrol then, but, uh, been a very good company to work for, to work with, and, uh, the data soft, the personnel, the budget, and the payroll software, that yearly contract is eight thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars. That is a slight increase over last year. It was eight thousand five hundred and ten dollars. So they have given us an increase this year. We also have another contract with them that you approve, uh, annually, that will be, I don't, I don't know if we've already approved it or it comes late after this, but it's for the data recovery software for all of our payroll and everything that we're responsible for keeping for life. So, uh, they house most, a lot of the states, so it's a good company to do with. And they're, they're with, they're with the DOE and the DLGF, so if there's an issue, uh, we're, we're, we're in good shape. We did about, is it three or four years ago? Three years ago? When we, uh, did the money to go to the new, we're, we're, we're still DOS-based now, but we're getting ready to go.
Two years, two years.
Two years ago. The money was set aside two years ago. You might remember it, when we set the money aside to go to the new Windows program, uh, and we're, I think we're next on the list. Did we get pushed back?
Yes.
Well, we're, we're right there. We're getting close, so we will be upgrading that software fairly soon. It's still DOS-based. It, it's, it's kinda fun, you know, when you go back to it, but, uh, not Windows-based. So anyway, I'm asking permission to approve the contract that does all of the payroll and personnel and budgeting information for the school district.
Take a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the, uh, contract with Comptrol.
Second.
I'll second it.
So, a motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Oakley to approve the Comptrol, Comptrol, Comp, accounting software contract as presented by Dr. Camp. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All post same sign, that motion carries.
In the past, you may remember that the company called American Appraisal, we're required to, uh, keep our fixed assets, uh, for the State Board of Accounts. They provide us with electronically and with disk, uh, uh, all of our fixed assets, the value of our buildings, the value of everything. And that's what's used to set, uh, our, help set our insurance rates and, and, uh, things of that sort. So, uh, we, uh, had to go through an accounting process with them, not a, a, an upgrade process with them a couple of years back as well, American Appraisal, because they would no longer appraise our, all of our assets, because we hadn't been reevaluated in over ten years. And I think it was last year, I think it was last year, they came in and they reevaluated the whole system. And it, and it changed the value of our corporation, because the value of some of our buildings had increased. So I think, I, I can't remember exactly how much that was, but it, it did change. American Appraisal was bought out by Duff and Phelps. And so, basically, I'm asking you permission to, uh, enter into the contract with, uh, Duff and Phelps for, uh, one thousand one hundred and forty dollars to organize and fix all of our fixed assets. We, we yearly turn in all the additions and deletions to them, and they put them in the reports that are given to the, the, to the State Board of Accounts when they come do their two-year audit. So, it's kind of a requirement in my law.
Do you entertain a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve the contract with Duff and Phelps.
Second.
Second.
So, a motion by Mr. Oakley and seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve the contract with Duff and Phelps, as presented by Dr. Camp. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All post same sign, that motion carries.
I had presented you guys with, uh, board members with a, uh, a proposal for two thousand seventeen. Basically, uh, some of the stuff that was on the list is building a new weight room for our PE classes and our athletic programs, and also remodeling the current area that is, uh, uh, weight room and wrestling room into one, uh, big wrestling room. So, uh, the process, the process has begun. We've got the initial drawings, and we've been, you know, I've been tweaking that and talking to George Link about that. This is basically on the board, uh, the backside of the auxiliary gym. Notice that we did not, uh, affect the two exits from the auxiliary gym. That would be the weight room. You would go in, uh, the door, uh, there from the auxiliary gym, or you could enter from the outside parking lot. Uh, we currently have approximately a thousand square feet in our weight room now. It's hard to get a thirty, uh, thirty-student class, which PE classes are always thirty students or more. Uh, it's hard to get those classes in there and have plenty of room, and this, this, uh, proposal is twenty-one hundred square feet. If you would look at it, there's the outside view. It would, the brick would match the brick as, as, as good as we can match with the other construction. You can see how close that is. And then they put red brick down on the bottom to try to give it a little different look, glass, uh, look, so that they can look out over the parking lot, and then people can still see in as well. So that is, uh, basically that. This is the current, uh, weight room and wrestling room. The big square is the current wrestling room. Uh, it, uh, it's a little over a thousand square feet, and the small area over there is right at a thousand square feet. So, by knocking out the wall and the restroom that's up there, we would create an environment for them that would be approximately two thousand square feet as well, and reutilize that space. They would have enough room for at least fifteen small circles. Uh, we might be able to squeeze in more, eighteen, but I, I, I'm pretty sure we can get fifteen in there. Regular mats about thirty-nine feet by thirty-nine feet, and I think over there on the small side, you can only get thirty-two by thirty-two. So that's, uh, I'll be giving you more information on that, uh, as we move forward.
I think it's important to just kinda point out, this was one of the projects, or two of the projects that were kinda on the list, on a couple of different decisions that just got cut.
on a couple of different decisions that just got cut.
Yeah.
So, it's, by process of elimination, it's making its way to the top of the list, but I would venture to say that weight room wasn't, hasn't been touched since, we did that back in eighty-six, eighty-eight.
The only thing that was done to it back in around two thousand two or three, we...
Put it off with them.
Got rid of it.
Welber, Welber was closing down, and they had that Nautilus weight equipment. And we bought that, we bought about seven Nautilus pieces of equipment, the old blue stuff. And we had a fork truck come in and set them over, over on top of the mezzanine, and then we had one of the companies that was there at the time, doing the HVAC, build us a, a deck, and we rolled it across into there. And Larry Lewis and I got his trailer and went over to Tractor Supply or Rule King, I can't remember which one we went to, and got horse matting, that big thick horse matting, because weight room matting was like a hundred dollars a sheet, and horse matting was only thirty dollars a sheet. So, we bought horse matting and one Saturday afternoon, him and I laid that rubber floor that's in there.
We are, we are a rural school.
That's the last time anything's been done to it. Now Scott and them did send out the weight equipment, and I, I can't tell you who did it, but they sent out the weight equipment, had it powder coated and recovered. That was, that's in there. Really, no new stuff has been done to that since it was built.
I don't think, having, having not heard, I don't think there's any pushback from us to not proceed further for more investigation.
Yeah, yes, yes.
We're just kinda continuing down the path of information gathering.
Probably if we're gonna do that, we wanna get on the list and get, and be, have bids go out sooner than later, so you get first on the list, get better bids when people are still looking, searching for work next year. If we could approve, I mean, we don't have to approve it in August, but definitely probably September, we would need to approve that. And so, but I'll get more information and, and, you know, some approximate cost and that sort of thing before we, you'll, you'll hear all that and see all that before you have to make a decision in the fall. Okay. Professional leave requests as listed, I'm asking the board to approve those. These are trainings that are going on over the summer, and for teachers and administrators for the pivot training. I'm asking the board to approve that.
Do you entertain a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve the professional leave request. I'll second it.
So a motion by Mr. Oakley and seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve the professional leave request, as presented by Dr. Camp. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All post the same sign, that motion carries.
Other reports, we have a thank you from Connor Vogel for receiving the Byron Britton and Lily Britton Memorial Scholarship. He appreciated getting the scholarship. We created at your request, a, a new overnight field trip request form. Amy created that, sent it out to the principals, got feedback from them, and this is what we come up with. Then that way now, when we do the overnight field trips, you'll, we'll have a name there of the, the chaperones. So instead of you having to ask, so that was a request that you had, so we have that, and we'll put that in place this school year. And then, the biann, biannual financial report is called, is called Form Nine. You have to do that, that's gonna need mine and your signature tonight, so Carol can submit that. The nine report, the Form Nine report, you do one at the end of six months, a nine, a six-month one at the end of the year, and you also have to go back and do a year one. So it's kinda funny how you have to do that, but that's that. The next board meeting is August eighth, remember, I'll be asking you for permission to publish the two thousand seventeen budget. Carol has been working on that diligently, we've got, we've had several meetings with our advisor, and we're meeting with Tom Miller again on Wednesday, and to verify all of the work that has been done, to make sure we hadn't made any mistakes. Like I said, the worst thing you wanna do is have the DLGF tell you you don't have a budget, because you didn't do it properly, so. Keep your fingers crossed, we've never had that happen.
What, school starts that Tuesday?
Uh, school starts August eighth for...
August Monday, well, teachers go back Monday.
Teachers go back Monday, students are back on the ninth. The summer's gone by.
So that's all I have.
Anybody else have anything for the, for the cost?
Legislature meeting. I think we have a date, September twenty-eighth.
Yep.
Six-thirty. Two have confirmed. Representative Washburn has not yet. I think we were looking at north elementary's gym, if it's available. And maybe since that is Washburn's district, he'll be more apt to go.
Okay.
Still working on the details, but that's where we're at right now.
Okay. We can, we can tentatively schedule it for the gym, and if we have three hundred and eighty people come, we'll have bleachers to put them in. And if we see that we don't have that many, we can go, maybe go into the new library.
Sounds great.
We'll have two options.
Has Representative McNamara got back with you?
That was the date she picked out and said that she would make it if I picked that date, so.
Why, do you have a date that she, you know she can't be there?
I just spoke with her an hour and a half ago, and she was asking me to remind her what that date was.
That was her date.
September twenty-eighth at six-thirty.
Yes.
Alright.
Brilliant.
That is all I have.
Anybody else have anything? Alright, take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
That's your second.
Okay.
We have a motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Oakley to adjourn, so we are adjourned.